Calling to order, the Monday, January 7th, 2018 Regular Meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henon.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support by Mayor Pro Tem Baker. Any changes, additions, or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Pastor Matt Bruner.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you and we thank you for this opportunity to gather and to discuss the future of our city. We thank you for bringing us through 2018 and bringing us into the new year. We just pray that you would guide us through this year, that we would make all the right choices and move forward as a city. Father, we thank you for all the blessings you've given us as the City of Berkeley and we thank you for the wonderful schools and we pray for the teachers as they prepare for the rest of the school year and for the students as they prepare for final exams coming up and then another semester of classes. I just pray that you would watch over them, help them to continue to learn and to succeed and to have a bright future ahead. I pray for this city council, that tonight's discussion would be beneficial and that the decisions they come to would be the correct ones and that you would watch over us this week in Jesus' name. Amen.
Will you turn the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it is now time for citizens' comments. When you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda, council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. Reminder, you may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Hello, my name is Laura Boos. I'm a resident of Berkeley, 1820 Beverly Boulevard. And I'm here tonight to speak in defense of the Coolidge crosswalks that have been disbanded, and I'd like to first tell you why and then some suggestions I have. The reason why I support them, when I first noticed them, I was thrilled because I could walk without having to go either to 12 Mile or to Catalpa. That helps to make the city a walkable city. Right now, I brag about Berkeley. I can walk to my library, my city hall, my post office, supermarket, pizza, even ice cream. That I can do walking. I would like to also add, I'm a commuter, I take the bus at 12 and Woodward, and we have a problem with people obeying the laws. I have, I'm really frightened. I carry a flashlight and I wear a vest. The southwest corner of Woodward, the cars do not respect that when I'm crossing with the light, I have the right of way. And I have called the police department, asking them to enforce that. I have similar problems when I cross here at 12 and Coolidge. So that also, I'd like to point out, Royal Oak, Claussen, Birmingham, and even Detroit and Woodward have those crosswalks, and they don't even necessarily have a sign. So this is why I support that. Now, my suggestions are that we enforce it, either by having police policing it and at least giving out warnings, if not tickets. The sign could also, you could have a sign saying what the fine is. You could also have a stop sign, because I know when I was using it, I still had to be very cautious because cars, some thought they had the right of way. And of course, I'm going to yield to a car. So at the end of the day, I want to say, we should enforce our laws and not change them to submit to the scuff laws who just decide they're not going to follow the law. So that's my position, and I will be following up on it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Kurt Hight, Berkeley resident. I just wanted to ask everybody to keep Mr. David Milner in your prayers. He's took a turn for the worse. He's not doing too well. And, you know, he's been a lifelong resident of the city and, you know, it means a lot to everybody that's met him. And, you know, he actually, I don't mean to use this, but he actually mentioned those crosswalks, and, you know, he says for all his life, he's just crossed, either crossed that right where there was no crosswalk or down at Wiltshire. He didn't ever had to go down to Catalpa. He would just go down to Wiltshire if he really, if he was really busy. But he said he didn't understand why anybody needed a crosswalk because he just would cross right across the street, even at 76, 77. So that was his input on there.
Seeing nobody else running up to the microphone for citizens' comments, we'll move on to our first order of business, which is the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approve of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, December 17th, 2018.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Henon, support from Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any corrections or additions? You did a great job with the minutes.
Thank you.
Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Consent agenda has passed. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations, we will move on to item number two, please.
Motion number M-0119, matter of authorizing Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers to conduct a 5K run on Sunday, October 6th, 2019, from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, beginning at Hurley Field at Anderson Middle School. During the event, representatives of the Stephen Siller Tunnel to Towers will provide volunteers to assist with the event.
Is there a motion to approve M-0119?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is becoming an annual event. They've had several successful events in the past utilizing Hurley Field and the run provided in the map at your place setting when you came here. They have a complete packet, which they, I praise them for, 10 months, 10 months advance to the event itself. Well done to the applicant. It has been reviewed by all the appropriate departments, as is our process, and as I mentioned earlier, in addition to the items included in your packet, there is a, there's a map included as well. So the applicant is present to represent the event.
Thank you.
Yes, so my name is Tim Ayton. I'm the co-director of the Stephen Siller Foundation, and Jen Ivy, Berkeley resident, is our other co-director, and our student director, Shmaya Ayton, and also Lilith Ivy as well, who's rehearsing tonight.
Thank you. Do you want to give just another, a brief rundown for those who may not be familiar with the run?
Sure. So the Stephen Siller.
Run, rundown, sorry. That was. I didn't even, I, that's not me. It's not me, I don't do the puns. Sorry, please.
Appreciate it. But basically, the Stephen Siller 5K was founded after the 9/11 terrorist attack, after Stephen Siller, who was a firefighter in the run, whose life ultimately perished after he went to go save people in the World Trade Center. So it was founded in New York City after the attack to basically support firefighters across the country as well as critically injured veterans.
And just like Stephen, when he ran through the tunnel, many first responders run in the event with their gear on as well, as well as some of our own departments and the members of our own department as well.
Yes, we had a lot of participation from the Berkeley Fire Department. We've had some folks from Detroit, Selfridge, Southfield.
Birmingham.
Birmingham. And we just, you know, keep trying to get, make this run bigger and have more police and fire departments throughout, you know, the metro Detroit area to come and participate. The more, more firemen in their gear running, the more impactful it is to everyone who participates.
Certainly. Was able to attend the event last year, and not only is it, I mean, it's very well-run, very well-set up, very energetic to get everybody excited, and it was October, it's sort of a brisk morning, but it was, it was a tremendous, there were a lot of folks out on the city, I noticed during, on the route, just cheering on people, especially all the first responders, thanking them for their service. But it was a very well-run event and I'm very happy to have it in the City of Berkeley. Questions from council?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you guys for bringing this back and for all you do to make this event successful. If folks at home wanted to learn more, learn more about the event, or sign up, or contribute, or otherwise donate or support this, do you have a Facebook, Twitter, website, that kind of stuff?
There is a website. I don't know if it's currently open yet, but it'll be open soon because they're trying to get all the websites approved, but it's tunnel2towers.org, but the number two.
Sure.
And we'll have a unique Berkeley website, but you would be able to get to it if you go to tunnels2tower.org, and that will have link. We have a pretty active Facebook and Instagram account. So pending what happens here and, you know, getting approval, that would be our next step.
Nice. I'll certainly support this tonight, and if I could ask, as we get a little closer, maybe you make a return appearance and speak during the citizens' comments or something to remind folks of us and give us the website as we get a little closer to, because to your credit, coming out here in January for an October event is fantastic. But some of us don't have the short-term memory that we used to, so whatever we could do to make sure this stays on the top of mind for people with this important event.
Absolutely.
Additional questions or comments from council? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to clarify this, we're approving the city streets use of this. You're also using school district property, and I would assume that you have got approval from the school for that.
Yes.
Yep, we've got permission from Bruce, who manages Hurley Field and the principal. We work really closely with Noel Sutherland, who's a teacher there, who's kind of, you know, or also a co-director of sorts, who helps us a lot too, so she's secured all that.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify to the people at home that this is a joint effort between the city and the.
One of many joint efforts. Okay. Seeing no additional questions or comments, thank you, Tim, Jen, and Shmaya for being here. It is an honor to support this as well and to continue spreading the story of Stephen Siller and everything else.
And also, I mean, speaking on behalf of the foundation, we really thank, you know, the City of Berkeley. It comes up, you know, in the meetings with the New York people that were super fortunate that worked so closely with the city. It really makes it that much better. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here this evening. With that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-0119?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-0219, matter of approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Berkeley and the Berkeley School District for shared resources and services.
Right on cue. Is there, is there a motion to approve M-0219?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a continuation of a longstanding policy and relationship that we have had on the topic of joint ventures with the school district. We would like to see this continue, so the agreement you have before you would do just that. DPW Director Derek Schuler works most closely with this agreement, prepared the documents you have in front of you, and can answer any questions if they come up.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. Before you tonight is the, a similar agreement that we've had in the past. This is a two-year arrangement that we have with Berkeley School District as well as the City of Huntington Woods for shared services. It is a collaboration effort. Basically, the City of Berkeley provides salt, rock salt, and fuel to the Berkeley School District, and we charge them for that use. That's essentially this agreement, although it allows for other collaboration efforts as well. So there really isn't a ton of changes to the document itself. The city attorney has reviewed that. I update the appendices frequently to reflect current unit pricing for what we pay for these wholesale materials, and they're charged by our finance department throughout the year based on fuel and salt use. So it's worked pretty well, and we haven't had really any issues with it whatsoever.
Thank you. As Director mentioned, this is an annual agreement that we have with the school district here. Are there any questions for Mr. Schuler? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick one. So the resolution states that the ability to provide materials and equipment will be determined by the providing party. If for whatever reason, we can't provide, you know, the equipment or these types of services or anything like that, is the district given sufficient notice so they're not kind of hamstrung in their budget if they have to go out and kind of procure this separately?
They do, and I would be giving that notice, and I have done that before with rock salt, actually, when we've been in shortage types years. We've been communicating with them to let them know that rock salt is in short supply, and so we're tightening things up a little bit. That has happened with the City of Huntington Woods as well. So we do give them as much notice as we can that we're running short.
Okay. And one more if you, thank you. So does this have to be, and has it been already approved by the school board?
There, my understanding is they're considering it at their January 14th meeting. So they had a study session, I believe, today to discuss it, and then it'll be brought to the board a little bit later this month.
Okay, thank you.
And the agreement does expire formally next month in February, just for everyone's use.
Additional questions? I wasn't sure if you had a question.
Oh, no.
All right. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Schuler, for, again, providing this report. It is another example of how frequently we do work with the school district and share services where we can, resources and services. A number of things that probably aren't always voted on as publicly as this one is, but we certainly appreciate the relationship that we have with them and happy to move forward with this tonight. Seeing no other questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-0219?
Henon.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-0119, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend section 2-2 of Article 1 of Chapter 2 Administration of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to authorize persons designate as zoning officer, code enforcement officer, and building inspector to issue and serve appearance tickets for ordinance violations.
Is there a motion to approve O-0119?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a housekeeping item, just updating the ordinance to reflect the fact that in many cases, we have somebody other than actual employees, direct employees of the city, that would be issuing tickets and reviewing performance standards and appearance standards within the community. We previously had a part-time officer who was fit the definition of an employee. Now, as we've discussed, McKenna Services is providing this service now, so they'd be most appropriately considered to be a designee instead of an employee itself. So want to make sure we put our, as we discussed, as we ramp up our code enforcement efforts, want to make sure that the enforcement side of that is likewise able to be executed as well.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Everybody's saving their comments up for later. Councilmember Henon?
I did just think of one thing. We, in our work session, we discussed civil infractions, and does this also cover that if we switch to that model, or would we have to also amend this at that time?
This, this will cover that as well. If we do make that transformation at some point to municipal civil infractions for our code violations, there will be other ordinance amendments as well, but this actually would be one of them. So if we adopt it tonight, we'll, we can check that one off the list and it'll be covered. But we won't have to amend it again if that's where your question was going.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no additional questions, oh, go ahead, Kurt, I can see you, sorry.
Sorry about that. Kurt Hight again. You know, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but there was somebody who had commented recently that they had an issue where they had received like a notice of violation or that they had to contact the city regarding, I guess, somebody had been parking in front of their house when the leaves were being picked up, so the leaves that were in front of their house got frozen to the ground, and they actually received the violation even though they don't have any control over somebody parking for a business and causing those leaves to not be picked up and cleaned properly. And I just wondered if anybody had, had a chance to address that and to figure out, is there a way to, after all the leaves, the date where they stopped picking up leaves, that maybe somebody needs to drive along and, you know, to take a look at, you know, the streets abutting, the, you know, the business areas and say, you know, we need to make a plan to get those before, you know, because it really shouldn't fall on the residents. Not really their fault, somebody was parking and the leaves didn't get picked up, you know, especially if they were out beforehand, you know? So I just wanted, I was, I was just worried when I hear you guys talking that the code enforcement might also now be getting a ticket. Somebody comes out, you know, comes home and they got a ticket on their door for leaves that really, they had out two weeks ago or something, you know? I don't, I don't want to hear, I hate to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
The short answer is yes. We actually brought a couple of different departments together to figure out how to avoid that situation again and make sure those residents that live immediately off our commercial districts receive the full services the rest of the residents.
Good, thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on O-0119, please?
Boucher.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-3918, matter of considering a resolution of support for an evaluation of a lane reduction on Coolidge Highway.
Is there a motion to approve R-3918?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a continuation of a postponed item from our previous meeting and also, of course, a continuation of a longstanding community conversation that we've been having. Based on the council's feedback at the last meeting, as they discussed what they would like to see, provided to them for, if this evaluation were to move forward, the city count, the city staff, administration, as well as the DDA and the DDA Director, all put our heads together, came through and had several meetings over the course of the holidays, and to bring back to you a couple of the items that were requested here, what you have in your packet is not only a more robust version of the resolution support, but as well as the communications plan that developed by the DDA, and an evaluation matrix for how do we, as the council said, how do we actually evaluate? How do we go through and figure out what we're measuring here, how we're going to do it, who would be the responsible party for those, and what intervals would those measurements come? I think the evaluation document hopefully appropriately answers many of those topics. That document was evaluated by a multidisciplinary panel of the city's traffic engineers, the Director of Public Safety, DPW Director and Foreman, as well as DDA Director and myself. And so, again, we went through item by item, scored them appropriately. This would be the same body that would be scoring them throughout, and at 12 months, would like to make a recommendation to city council based on the traffic safety portion of this, as indicated by the council. And then if council sees fit, we would then progress for another 12 months to complete a 24-month evaluation of this project. So that is kind of the quick overview. We've worked to make as much of the surrounding materials as public as possible for, for, on this topic, since that was one of the items that we received back, some, have previously received feedback on. So we hope that we have painted a full picture of what this evaluation could look like so that council can respond with whether or not we're on the right track, whether they feel comfortable to move this forward this evening, or whether they'd like to postpone it with, with some additional direction for administration. So that is as much as I try to fit into one, one quick introduction as possible, but myself, DPW Director, DDA Director, are all available for, for questions or comments if needed.
Okay. At our last meeting, we spent a considerable amount of time having a very robust conversation regarding things that were missing from the last resolution, the last packet. As the manager mentioned, we have received a lot of information since then. Many of the questions were answered. I'm not necessarily going to speak for anyone if they were answered satisfactorily, we're not, but we'll get to that. So before, what I want to do is, one, Ms. Carmichael, let you, you have some remarks first, but then kind of get some feedback from council on where we are based on our conversation last time. Allow residents that are here a chance to give us some, some feedback as well on the new materials, and then ultimately decide what council wants to do moving forward. Okay? Vivian?
Thanks. I did want to tell you, you know, we, we did a really comprehensive dive into what kind of metrics are being tracked pretty much across the US. And we found this, this template on the state of New Mexico's website under their whole road diet section. They're pretty aggressive with these types of projects, and this was the most, or their template was the most comprehensive we had seen. So when I ran across this, and then we, you know, Matt and I, and we had HRC, we have Spalding Decker, you know, we sent it out to Pat Colley at TIA, we really, really beefed it up. And I think that what you see in front of you today is probably the most comprehensive metrics, matrix for a road diet in North America today. So I just want to, you know, in the packet of information that Matt uploaded to you, I think there were a couple of documents that talked about, from the Federal Highway Authority, about how to measure, and I think if you look at the types of things that other communities are measuring, they're all included in here, but not one of them is as comprehensive. So I think, or I hope that you will agree what we've brought to you is a very thoughtful and comprehensive set of measurements that will look at all aspects of how this road needs to perform and the benefits that it should be bringing. So if you have questions, we do have lots of experts here to answer.
Thank you. All right. Council, we had obviously a number of questions, information we wanted, so let's start with how, one, what are we still missing? How are we responding, or how do we feel about the matrix that Ms. Carmichael just mentioned? Does it provide all of the things, does it provide measurable outcomes for all the things that we were looking for, starting with where we are now, moving forward? So before I open it up to the residents, just some, some feedback from council, if there is any.
I just, thank you. I think this packet is much more robust than what was before us previously and much more complete, and I want to commend all the parties involved in bringing all of this information to us. It's impressive. Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Yeah, I think it's a great improvement over what we had. The only, only part of this that I still have, have not been able to fully digest is the 94 pages of specifications and the 12 pages of drawings, which I'm still working on. So, and I'm making comment sheets on those, but there, and there's some questions I have on that, which I don't know, we'll get into tonight, on the robustness of some of the markings that we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Henon?
Yeah. This is really thorough. This is way beyond what almost any community does. So I know there's a lot of fear out there about these changes, but we are really going into this deliberately and carefully, and so want to try and assuage those fears from folks. When I first saw the evaluation matrix without the resolution, I had some concerns. Some of those criteria. concerns. Some of those criteria are pretty subjective. Some of them are, even though there was a multidisciplinary group that scored them, some of the scores I don't really buy. But with, coupled with the resolution where we get the final say, if, you know, if there's, you know, something that's really wonky going on with that, we can, it is a checks and balances. We are still able to correct it. And to put the folks at home at ease, the timing of it will be that it will be happening shortly before an election where four of us will be up. So, you know, if we are really, really going against, you know, if it really fails and it's really going against the wishes of the people and we still keep doing, you know, keep going forward with it, the folks at home are going to have recourse for us. So.
Well, I need to be one of those four people.
That would be me, too.
Okay. Additional questions and comments? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'm happy to see that, you know, after that, the postponement was, came back with a really well-crafted resolution, as been said, a specific set of benchmarking metrics. I think it is very comprehensive and very well done. You know, it's going to give us, I think, a much better handle on whether what's proposed is actually, you know, something that we can consider a success or a failure for that matter. The timeframe in my mind makes sense. Public input has been thorough and robust, you know, input sessions, emails, community conversations, social media. You know, I think as the mayor said many times, in the end, it's about safety and this seems to, to really hit home that point and certainly in conjunction with support from Beaumont, you know, I think that that's been very helpful. So I think it's, I think it's a very, very well-done packet that came back to us. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Prost?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, too, want to express my appreciation to the DDA and to the department heads and all the support that went into this, preparation for this. It is exceptionally robust and well-thought-through. I was in attendance at the DDA meeting where they, where that board reviewed this material and expressed their support for this, so they have confidence with this as well. In tonight's discussion, we haven't spoken as much about the communication plan appropriately. We talked about metrics and things, but I also want to commend the work of the DDA and in partnership with the Citizens Engagement Advisory Board and those folks to, to think through how it is it will communicate before, during, and after. Because it's one thing to have the numbers in the spreadsheet and the data, which is cool, but it's how do you share that information with other people that I think is really going to be a key aspect to this. I am comfortable with the material that's in here about that as well.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you. Yeah, just to build off on that real quick about the communications plan and how to get that word out, I think one small suggestion might be just to have sort of a standing report, maybe, you know, city manager during your, at the end of your report for city council meetings about updates of where progress is at, maybe something that we can see maybe potentially at the planning commission as well from community development director, just so, every medium out there, every, every avenue out there to continue to get the word out. Thank you.
In the city manager's introduction, he mentioned the twenty-four month evaluation including a twelve-month review of road safety performance. He was detailing the evaluation metrics. I also want to call attention to section five in this resolution. It says, upon the city council's review of the evaluation findings at the twelve-month period and upon discussing the recommendation of the multidisciplinary panel, council will take a vote at a regularly-scheduled city council meeting. If the vote is in favor of reverting to the four-lane configuration, then the DDA will re-stripe Coolidge back to four lanes based upon an agreement between the city and the DDA in terms of repayment. So although one of the changes is from twelve to twenty-four months, we still have, would have the ability at twelve months to say, it's not working, we need to go back and have the ability to pull a plug. And that would be at a public vote at a city council meeting, again, to try to keep the conversation as public as possible and to get as much feedback and engagement from the residents. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, and I, and the reason, I believe, for the, let's take extension to twenty-four months is the safety sort of impacts you can tell within twelve. The economic impacts are much harder to tell in that short of a time period. And while we talk a lot about safety and multimodal and bikes, you know, economic development really is a large motivator for this. And so, you know, having those results, but still having that safety valve if it's clearly not working, I am comfortable with that.
Thank you. Yeah, to that point, a lot of that conversation was had at the DDA meeting where they talked about the economic development and the need for these things to take time, right? It's not an instant thing. But yet, having that checkpoint at the twelve-month mark makes a lot of sense for us as well to be able to make a thoughtful assessment sooner than, than a two-year window, which is, I guess, is what a lot of the best practices are. And keeping in mind, to that point exactly, that although the road is called Coolidge Highway, I think, you know, that name is itself a defect because a lot of folks treat it like that and drive very, very fast to go through our community to get to some other place. And by having this be part of a thoughtful, comprehensive approach to rethinking our relationship with Coolidge, if you can look at it that way, maybe a name change might be in order, maybe an opportunity to revisit the current speed limit to see what else we could do to make it safe. What I'm going with that is, as we think about what's in the name, and the thing is called highway, and a lot of people take that at its word, maybe in addition to this, we can also begin to get some conversation going or thoughts around other ways that we can extend the comprehensive vision for how Coolidge can best serve our residents and our businesses, and the schoolchildren, too. Thanks.
Okay. Residents?
Charles Terrell from Berkeley. At the December meeting, what I took away from it is that your requirement, the council's requirement to the DDA was to come back with specific, measurable, objective criteria as well as a clear indication of success of the project. That has not been met with metrics, with the matrix. That is all subjective. Granted, it was put together by this, by this team, multidisciplinary team, but it's still subjective. There are no measurements. At the DDA meeting that I attended with Mr. Baker, the director brought up, she said, now if, for example, the transit time increases by three minutes, would that take it from a three to a one? Or would that take it from a three to a two? If it was only forty-five seconds or a minute, would that keep it at a three? Or would that go to a one? We don't know. And they didn't know at the meeting. And the multidisciplinary team wouldn't know. None of that has been codified. There are no objective criteria being used. This is how, you know, we have a committee that meets and comes up with, what do they feel the number should be for each of the criteria in the matrix. So it's not objective. It's not measured. It's not measurable. It is all subjective. So I, I think that while this is much more robust than what they presented a month ago, it's an abject failure on what the council asked the DDA to return to them. As such, I'd say right now, let's, let's just forget about this. Let's kill it while we can.
Thanks, Chuck.
How's it going? Kurt Heidig? Now, you know, okay, so I'm going to hear, talk about the lane reduction. You know, in the, in the multimodal plan adopted in May two thousand and twelve, it was mentioned some things are note that at the time, the average daily traffic was over twenty thousand cars per day. And because of this, transportation engineer and national expert John LaPointe agreed with the Berkeley Public Safety Director that the average daily trips that Coolidge was experiencing was appropriate for a four-lane road. He advised that any changes be considered, to consider narrowing Coolidge be carefully studied. And now, if you look at the Federal Highway Administration website, that they have information on road diets, and they reference many states that have attempted or tried out these lane reductions, but they, they do make a note of it that says that all of the, most of the sites that were considered have an average daily traffic below twenty thousand. And that, I think that's important because currently, while the average daily traffic on Coolidge in this area is slightly lower, it would, it should be an assumption that once Northwood is complete, that we're going to see a return to the previous levels of over twenty thousand or even higher, depending on what they, what they put in there, if they put in a new market and a lot of stuff that's attracting, you know, clientele. I, I don't know if they've done, have they done a traffic study that, that would, that determines what kind of traffic they expect is going, is going to draw? Because usually they can tell that they're going to expect so much traffic, additional traffic coming down Coolidge to come to this new center. I, I would hope that that takes that into account. Now, there has been a lot of debate about whether or not reducing these lanes will result in a lot of headache for vehicles traveling the area. The Federal Highway Administration does say that the reduction of four to three lanes in a commercial area, you would see a delay. And also, the originally stated goal of the lane reduction was to make it unpleasant for higher volumes as a way to encourage some to find alternate routes. Now, I think that while that is important, people need to realize that some of these alternate routes, like Woodward, has already seen a heavy increase, whereas when they did the traffic study for the M1, the, the national daily averages were like closer to sixty thousand. Now, if you check the websites, every day I've checked it, it's in the seventies to, to the mid-seventy thousands every day going up in this stretch of Woodward. And it was, you're talking about fifteen thousand increase in, in a short time since the M1, M1 traffic study was done. So last night, last month, you guys delayed the, the order to give time to come up with a way to monitor the positive and the negative impacts. And now, while I, I do, you know, I appreciate the effort and I, and I feel that it's very robust. I, I kind of think that maybe it kind of needs maybe even a list reduction kind of to, to focus in more on ways just to monitor what are the benefits they're hoping to see? Because sometimes they're, they're monitoring like pedestrian traffic, walking. I mean, they have a section for biking, which is going to provide, but they're not making any changes to the pedestrian traffic portion of it. So I'm not sure why you would monitor that. But that being said, I, I got some questions about that. And when you look at the, the way the matrix set up, you know, Charles had touched on that, some of the numbers, I feel that the numbers were crafted in a way that it makes it harder to really determine whether there was a negative impact, but it makes it easier to claim that there was a positive impact. And, and it concerned me when he talks about how there's no way to really see how they're coming up with numbers or what dictates whether it was a plus or a minus. I mean, all of this stuff, when, like, when, like, the first thing I see is public acceptance. It's, right now, it's rated at a three. Now, this is not really even related to whether or not it's a success or a failure. But when you say public acceptance is a three, you guys really didn't get a whole lot of input from the public. I mean, as, as a relation, I mean, somebody did a quick poll and, and there was a hundred and twenty-some people that right away said, no, they're not for a lane reduction, and only fifteen people said they were for it. And these, this is a board that where the same people that are very publicly supporting this are talking every chance they get. And so the ratios of what you, the input, there was no, nothing on the, on the submitted forums that said, are you for it or against it? People just looked at it and said, yeah, this one seems like it's for it, or this one seems like it's against it. There was nothing that gave anybody an opportunity to say, hey, yes or no, would you, would you support this? So I think it's kind of, to rate it as a three is subjective. That's a, that's kind of the one that's not related. The other things that I, I wondered, okay, like, when I saw, they, they had a thing on here for, for level of comfort for pedestrians. Now, right now, it's at a one. I mean, to me, I don't know where you get a level one and, and what that number means, because to me, I would think a one is when I, when I go down, I, I visit a shop that's at McNichols and Mount. And when you walk down the sidewalk, it's, it's considerably different than walking down the sidewalk on Coolidge. So to me, I think a three or four might be more acceptable at, for pedestrian comfort. Are you talking about safety? You're talking about, in, in every category, it's better on Coolidge than it is over there, but where are they getting it at a one? I mean, from, you can't go down from a one. So to me, I think there needs to be some time taken to hammer out where we're starting at. Because if you're going to put the onus on, onus on residents to say, oh, my gosh, it's horrible, now traffic going up and down the street because people are bypassing, you know, the congestion. If you're going to put the onus on them to, to use data to support what they say and the change in what's happening, you have to start from a base to say, like, when you look at, right now, they have traffic diversion of Kipling, Kenmore, and Beverly at a three, but I thought you guys were going to do some kind of least check once traffic returns to normalcy. Because once the construction is done, when, you know, the, the crosswalks, I felt were diverting some people. I talked to many people that said that they, they, they kind of went around those because it kind of made it hard to guess, well, do they stop? Do they go? And it kind of felt like it was closed in. So right now, it's rated at a three. But I, I really say, while it wasn't perfect before, I would say it's probably, people would say it was, you know, probably equal to about a four before, because even though it wasn't ideal, it was what they had always been accustomed to. So I, I don't understand where they got a three from. And they, they can't really have a three because we haven't seen a normal traffic pattern in months. And, and I would just really like to see something done to, to say, we, we need to have a way to start. If we're going to put the onus on residents, say, what are we measuring to say there's been this much of an impact? How, what's, what's the current condition? And you can't really measure that until you get to traffic normal. Now, and I'll try to make this quick. I just, I just wanted to touch on some other things. There was, there's other things like provide shorter pedestrian crossing distance. Now, I don't know if that means crossing between one side of the street to the other. That's not changing, but right now, they rate it as a one. How, how would they make that better? But if it's the difference between crosswalks, okay, if it's at a one, I, I look at it, every time I've ever read anything about where, where you can cross, like, in a country, sometimes you get only a crossing once per mile. Sometimes when you get closer to the city, it's once every half mile. We have it once every quarter mile. So to me, it's rated as a one in here, but to me, it looks like it should be more like a three. Whereas then you could say, now, if you add additional crosswalks with lights, you can take it up to a four or even a five. Or if you take away some of those crosswalks, you take it down to a two or a one. You can, you can dictate what that really means. Right now, a one doesn't mean anything. But it makes it easy to say, oh, well, we, we, we have success because now it's a three, but what, what was one? What did it mean? I mean, there's nothing, there's no guidelines in here to, to talk about that. And, you know, when, when you say you're going to measure provides comfortable parking experience, I don't know that the new way provides comfortable parking experience because you're, you're increasing, you're, you're adding a bike lane, but now they got to make sure they watch out for a bike that could come out of nowhere. It's hard enough to see a vehicle. Now you got to look for a bike when you're going to park and when you're going to leave your parking spot. And, and the last thing I wanted to talk about was, and sorry about that, I'm trying to, I'm trying to make it as quick as possible. It's just when it says fits right of way, they measured it as a two. But, you know, when they added park, additional parking along Coolidge, they said it can be done in a way that it does not impact the quality, the level service of Coolidge, and they went ahead and they did it. Now, you know, the, the original restriping was a little bit more zigzaggy and they, they since improved on that. But if we're, we're rated at a two, we should have done that change to begin with because, you know, what were we at before? A three or a four? Okay, you know, and, and so it's just continued on that. And my only suggestion would be that if you're going to do this and you're still going to go ahead and go with it, and, and you don't want it to freeze, I would say, start talking about a date. Say, let's say if you said May or maybe even June, and I'll tell you why I say June. And that allows you to see a, a normalcy come back to the city, whereas you don't have construction on Coolidge. You can measure what the traffic is in on the residential streets. That gives a, a, a concrete number during good weather. And then it allows you to say, okay, we're going to start this test, and I prefer June, say, let's say you start the test after school gets out. Because what that, what happens is you see a, a lot of calming already of the traffic. And then you get two to three months of calmer traffic where people can adjust to it and see how, you know, and, and get used to it. And then all of a sudden, now, as traffic starts picking up in September, you, you have your whole, the rest of your year to, you know, because you guys always, I've, I've seen it mentioned several times by many of you saying it's going to take time for it to adjust. Well, I, I don't think that just shoving it in during the busiest times of the year is the ideal time. So, and, and you also don't want to just stop, you know, considering doing this. You do want to test it. I think you need to find a logical time of when to insert this and when it would be a little less disruptive. You know, there was something else I missed on here, and I'm sure, but, you know, hopefully, somebody goes through and looks at these numbers, because all of these numbers, I, I, I really feel that the objectives that you want to see positive of, I feel like they've been understated on here. So it makes it easier to say that there's been success. And the stuff that we want to measure, whether we have a negative impact, I feel that on here, they're understated so that when the negative impact does happen, it's not as measurable. It doesn't seem like it's as big as a deal. And, and I think that, I, I really And, and I think that, I, I really think that that gives us, if we set the date for June, it gives us time that we can look at numbers and say, you know what, I'm more comfortable that that's a three or that's a four instead of being a one or a two. And we can find out what that three means and how do we get from a three to a four? I, I really think that needs to be there before we just go ahead and do it. Because if you're gonna require people to provide data and say, this is what's happened to my street since you did this, but all they got is, well, I just feel like it's busier, then you, you can't, you can't allow somebody to say, well, I feel like this is a one right[632.29]
SAP, one of the things that factors into that is the consumers were capping on Beverly. That would have to come to a, that would be, have to be completed before we can get numbers that are more consistent with what the average experience is and on the Berkeley side streets.
Right.
So, the baseline would be just comprised of forty-eight to seventy-two hours? Is that essentially all we're looking at?
Yeah, typically what you, what you'd want to do is just, like I say, you know, have a, a time period when school is in session and then look to get data between Tuesday and Thursday, that's usually when you're going to find normal traffic patterns. Mondays are sometimes light, Fridays are sometimes light, just because of people adjusting their, their work schedule. So, usually just shoot to get a good twenty-four hour data collection during those three days. Typically, what we do is send them out on Tuesday and pick them up on Thursday. So, you know, you could get anywhere between forty-eight and seventy-two hours worth of data.
Okay. And I believe that's per location, right? We have multiple locations that we'll be studying, but that's per location, right?
Yeah, yeah. What we would do is, is put them all out there at the same time, so we'd have a consistent dataset.
Okay. Additional comments? Counselor. Counselor member Henan?
Just throw out my opinion on the bike lanes again. I don't think they make any impact one way or the other. I don't think they're going to be highly used. I don't think they will be more safe. I don't think they're going to hurt anything. I think we may find better use of the space in the future, angled parking or wider, you know, which would increase the amount of parking or wider lots. But at this point, I don't, I don't find the bike lanes a stumbling block. I, you know, I just don't think they're as great as some people think they're going to be. After hearing some of the comments tonight, and some of what I was asking for last time was more precision, some of these things, some of these are subjective, but some of these are objective. And we could, before we go into, say, you know, if our benchmark, let me look for an example, I had one, travel times, you know, if our current travel times are this, then a change from, you know, where it is now to a longer travel time, you know, this one would change the score to something specific. Some of these, I think we could make more precise ahead of time. Some of these, we can't. I think, I wasn't prepared to ask for that tonight, but I think that could make people more comfortable with this.
Well, and we can do that. It doesn't necessarily say that we are locked into this matrix today. This is, I mean, according to the resolution. So, we would certainly, would still have control over that. And I think, I certainly trust the multi-disciplinary panels' recommendations, but I, I mean, I too have a couple of questions, maybe with some of the responses. But for me, the biggest concern is, okay, even though we have these baselines, what is the acceptable movement when we're looking at the results? How do we know that we are bringing about the desire changes or not? That is the biggest question mark that I still have. And I, that's what I need to be comfortable with. And again, that's not necessarily what we're just talking about this evening, but that is something that I want to have a lot more information on. And if that's a council decision, if we decide what it is, then we'll decide what it is. But that, I, I, I mean, we, we're going to need to know that to know if at six months, twelve months, we're having the impact that we want.
And just to follow up on that, there's sort of no weighting, you know, some, some things are, you know, just important as others, you know, that complies with ADA, is it important as emergency vehicle movement? Maybe not, you know, so, but they're in the same section. And I just picked two at random, so, but, you know, so, there's some concern there, too.
Mayor Proton?
Sorry, thank you. I was just gonna, I was just suggesting, you know, in addition, or in the, in the spirit of taking the most comprehensive metric program in North America and, and making it even further, I do think that there is plenty of time and plenty of steps ahead for us to say, this is directionally correct, we have confidence, right, but essentially, we're voting the confidence in moving forward with this program. There are several checkpoints ahead of us where if we found something to be flagrantly off or so concerning that we have deep, deep issues with, it goes to bid, and after the bid, the bid has to be approved, and the funding has to be allocated. There are several steps in which we could intervene as appropriate. But directionally, this feels to be quite comprehensive. I do look forward to having more robust definitions behind each of these metrics. I, I fear some of the words may be, may have been misinterpreted in some of the converse, in some of the assumptions around the numbers if you weren't in the DDA meeting, and that's a, that's something that needs to be addressed, so that you could look at that and then have the paragraph that explains what that metric means to then address some of the, the misperceptions about how some of these metrics are intended to be analyzed. So, I look forward to seeing that additional detail. I'm satisfied that this is directionally correct and, and robust enough that, that we can have confidence in, in moving forward, knowing that if, you know, through the funding mechanisms or otherwise, if we feel that this is in jeopardy of, of harming the community, then we can certainly take an alternate action.
Thank you. Additional questions, I'm not seeing anybody else jumping up. What is the desire of council? We have a, a resolution in front of us. Last time, we opted to postpone. We have a motion on the table right now to approve R. thirty-nine eighteen. If I don't hear any other comments, then I will just call the roll.
I think everything we've seen so far looks good. I said earlier, my only concern is that, that the technical portion of that, and that, there was a meeting on that tomorrow, and that can be ironed out before it goes out to bid. So, that's, there may need to be some changes there, or may not, but everything up to this point that we looked at, to me, is acceptable.
Is council ready to make a decision, then? Okay. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R. thirty-nine eighteen?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
And Terbrandt?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. zero-three nineteen, met of considering the Downtown Development Authority, DDA Director Agreement with Vivian Carmody of Carmody Consulting.
Is there a motion to approve M. zero-three nineteen?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion approved by Mayor Proton with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgard?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Per the memo and included in your packet, the prevailing state statute that outlines development authorities does require that both the DDA Board as well as the City Council both approve the, the appointment of the director for it to, to take full effect. What you have before you was sent forth by the, first, the organizational committee within the DDA, and then voted, voted for, voted to be approved by the DDA Board itself. Now, it comes to City Council. The, the DDA Board's approval is, is no way restrictive of this council. They are, they're still able to do whatever they want. But there are a couple of changes that were recommended by the organizational committee first, and then approved by the DDA Board. There is an increase in the monthly payment, as well as some additional items covered under the expenses section that were not covered in the two thousand seventeen version. In correspondence, I forwarded to City Council a message from members of the organizational committee, including the Chair, giving some of the prevailing reasoning behind making these changes, as well as why they recommended to the DDA Board first, and then to the City Council, the thought process behind the two thousand, what would be dubbed the two thousand nineteen agreement. I'm not sure if there's, okay. There, there is, Mr. Agby is here on behalf of the DDA Board. I, my role as the City Manager also serves as the Secretary of the DDA Board as well.
Comments, questions from council for Mr. Agby or the Secretary?
If there are any, he might as well be here.
Any questions for Mr. Agby?
There was strong consensus among the DDA, so, just to share that with you.
The vote was unanimous?
To, to approve what you have before you.
It was unanimous vote from the DDA Board.
Just as a matter of, I don't know, some kind of matter related to that, the DDA Board hasn't met formally in a regular meeting since the December twelfth meeting, so those meeting minutes haven't been formally approved yet, but we did see a draft of the meeting minutes as part of the packet for the Wednesday meeting, and in that packet, it does affirm that it was a unanimous vote at the December meeting. And they'll ratify that at their, their DDA Board meeting, which is this Wednesday in two days' time. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from anybody else?
Are we allowed to ask questions, or no?
You are allowed to comment. You can, you can, you can ask questions. I guess we'll see if they can be answered.
I have both. We've only been open a year, so I don't know, this is all still very new to me.
Can you just say your name quickly?
My name is Robin Coden. My family and I own a new business in downtown Berkeley. It's on Twelve Mile. It's called Some Girls Boutique. So, this part of the business is, I don't know that much about this part. Our business in town, we've only been here a year, but my husband and I have both been in business for several years, and we run two successful businesses. But this kind of thing, I've never done before. I, I don't, who, does Vivian appoint the people on the DDA that approve? Or who, who, who approves the DDA Director's contract being renewed? Who approves that?
Well, that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing here.
Okay, so, are they people that have been appointed by Vivian?
Appointed by us.
Appointed by you. Okay. So, when the, I, I, we just, the business owners just found out a couple of days ago that the contract was up. Were other people, I'm just curious, were other people allowed to apply for the position? Were other people looked at for the position? Or was it just an automatic renewal?
Mr. Secretary?
No, the DDA Board did not opt to solicit the position as vacant. They did opt to put the, put the agreement in front of you, that, in front of them and in front of you that you have today, which was essentially a continuation of Mrs. Carmody's tenure.
So, were the business owners or the residents, were they, I didn't know about it. I'm just wondering how, is that how it always works? Is this, or do the business owners get a say? Do the residents get a say?
Well, that, that's why we have, at, at an open meeting here, the DDA meeting was, I believe, on the twelfth.
December.
December twelfth, when it was on there, it was an open meeting on there.
To discuss this, to discuss this.
It wouldn't have come to us if it hadn't come from them first to get on our agenda.
Okay. So, it is what it is. So, here is where I am with it. I learned a long time ago that just because one person says something, doesn't mean that others aren't also thinking it. Congratulations. If this is the position that you get again, I hope that you kill it this year. Again, totally new to this area, I only know the potential that I see for it. I want you to be awesome at this. I want this city to be awesome.
Robin, can you just address?
We moved here because we thought that this was going to be a super cool downtown area to be in. It's up and coming, and so is our business. What I have found, since we have opened, is that it is awesome. There are parts of downtown Berkeley that are so cool, and the residents are so cool, and the community, but there's a definite divide. There's a big divide in everything. So, when it comes to the DDA, I feel like it's almost Vivian against everyone, because there's no communication, which is a huge part of being a community. The residents and the business owners and the DDA, we all need to be working together. In the community where I live, there's only support. That's it. We want our community to be awesome. So, I kind of felt like, and we don't have a downtown where I live, so this was, this is the downtown we chose. I feel like this downtown could be awesome, but we have to all work together. The residents are entitled to know certain things that are going on with the businesses that only the DDA knows. There has to be some, some way that we know things. The, the lights issue, I shouldn't have to get in touch with the DDA to say, please respond to the residents. That's not my job. It's not my job. My job is to make my store as awesome as I can, so that I bring new people to this area, so that this area flourishes and becomes as awesome as I know it can be. I think this is your year, but we have to, there, there has to be less of a, a divide and more of a, a community support feeling. And then I have one more thing, and I'm done. The vacancies all over the area, there are some that have still been vacant since we, before we moved in. I don't know if that has anything to do with Vivian or the DDA or who, because again, I'm new, but I, I'm kind of curious as to why the, or maybe this is something that you could work on this year, or somebody could work on this year, the DDA, Vivian, whoever, sit down with the landlords and the property owners and find out a way to get these spaces filled. If it's a money issue, whatever the issue is, the quicker we get them filled with viable businesses, the more money we get into this area, and the, the more it grows, and everything grows. Properties value grow, it's only positives. I had more, but I've been working since so early this morning that I am completely beat up right now. Sorry. I'm on TV, too, right? I look great.
Yes, you are.
I look so good. I don't see clients today, and I do clean the store. And the other thing, I get that Coolidge is a priority. Vivian made it very clear to me that Coolidge is a priority. I think the entire downtown needs to be a priority. It's just big picture. I just want to do better about thinking big picture and not getting defensive if I have questions or I'm trying to learn, and the other business owners, too. We just, we all work really hard, so we're all just looking for growth. Okay.
Thank you, Robin.
Cindy Coon, resident of Berkeley, business owner in Berkeley. I've been a resident for thirty-three years. I am going to celebrate twelve years over there on Twelve Mile, and I'm disappointed. I do a lot of volunteering in this community. I don't think I have to tell you that. I spend a lot of my free time away from my cafe and catering business, and I volunteer my time in the city. I had a meeting over a year ago with Vivian. There is absolutely nothing that she wants to do to join in with existing events that are going on in this community, whether they be successful or not. I feel as though I'm involved with some successful cruise fest, holiday parade. I'm the president of the Berkeley Junior Women's Club, but there's zero, zero involvement with the DDA on any of those. Don't slap the DDA's name on our events if you're not going to help. I grew my business without the help of the DDA. I will continue. I chose the city of Berkeley to open up my business because I love the city. I really do. I love the residents. I love the other business owners. I love what we stand for. I'm not a Royal Oak, could have gone to Royal Oak. I grew up in Royal Oak. Could have gone to Ferndale, okay? We, as business owners, have that choice, that we can go wherever we want. That's free enterprise. Okay? I'm just expressing my points. I think Vivian, when she came in and she talked, and the first time that I met her, she's a go-getter, she wanted involvement with all the businesses. She wanted everybody involved. I said, that is so cool. You don't have to be a chamber member, because I remember being a new business, and a hundred and fifty bucks to join the chamber was hard to come by. But the DDA says, no, we're going to have involvement with all of our businesses. Not. If you don't join her brigade, you are not involved. Something's wrong with that. Something is wrong with that picture. Thank you for your time.
My name is Denise Brainard. I am the chairperson for Berkeley Days, and I'm not here to bash anybody or anything like that. All I want to do is express my concern from Berkeley Day's point of view with the DDA's lack of consulting other events that are going on, and I'm, I'm very specifically pointing out, there was supposed to be an event that happened on Coolidge at the same time as the Berkeley Days race that year, last year, and it was going to impact traffic on Coolidge, they were going to shut down Coolidge, at the same time that the race was going on, which was going to redirect traffic and put my, my runners in danger. So, I guess what I would be asking for this group as having oversight over the DDA is maybe have the DDA more involved in checking what other events are going on. I, we all want this city to be great. We all want it to be a destination, whether it's a destination for Berkeley Days or Art Bash or, you know, the, the chalk art. I think these are all fantastic things, and we can all work together to make them happen. But I know through a lot of the volunteer groups that I do participate in, a lot of times, I feel like we're at, at odds with the DDA when it should be a collaboration. I feel like we're not really working together to make this city as great as we can. So, that would be one thing I would ask this group, as we're talking about the DDA Director and the DDA Director's contract, to really push for more of a collaboration with the different organizations in the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Denise.
Charles Terrill from Berkeley. What I'd like to address is the process that this is taking on. The DDA Board addressed the contract issue December twelfth. Matt, John, especially Vivian, everybody knew that the contract expired December thirty-first. December twelfth would not have given them enough time to put things together, to vote, have a resolution, come to council before the contract expired. It should have been done way in advance of this. Now, you're being asked to retroactively approve a supplier contract back to January one. And I don't think that's the right thing to do. The people involved should have been able to figure out the timing, should have known better, should have had it done so that council could have had a look at the contract and possibly voted to renew or extend the contract prior to its expiration. So that if you do choose to retain this supplier, I ask that you do it without being retroactive.
Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Turney, I have a question. You've reviewed this contract?
That's correct.
Are there, is there any sort of measure in this contract for evaluations by the DDA of the Director, as we've talked about with other contracts and have, as we have coming up on our next agenda item? Then I think with any contract, there should be some sort of tool in place, whether the DDA has the ability to evaluate, or a council has the ability to evaluate these contracts that we approve.
Well, excuse me. The contract is between the DDA and, and the Director. So, the city's not directly involved in that. We do, by virtue of the Downtown Development Authority Act, have the ability, actually the responsibility, to approve that contract, just like we also have the responsibility to approve the DDA's budget. In direct answer to your question, there is no specific review provision in this contract. I had actually specifically looked at that when I discussed it with the City Manager. I didn't feel it was necessary or appropriate to put in there for the simple reason that the contract can be reopened at any time. It can be terminated for cause, it can be terminated without cause upon two weeks' advanced notice. So, the DDA can review this, reopen this contract at any time it wants to. It doesn't have to restrict itself to any particular periodic review time or set date. So, that's a long answer to your simple question. Is there ability to review and evaluate? Absolutely. Any time the DDA wants to, and as often as they want to.
So, as you mentioned, the agreement could be terminated without cause by either party for convenience or any reason, without cause on two weeks' advanced written notice?
Correct.
Additional comments?
Again, my name is Andrew Agby, and I'm, I'm on the DDM, the newest member. I've been there for three months, and it certainly seems like we have some opportunities. And I think that's, Vivian aside, is a new member, and I've been a business owner for twenty years, I've lived in the city for forty-five years, so it certainly seems like there are some opportunities, a DDA member, that I'm, I'm taking to heart, that I may or may not have been aware of. So, so I took a note on that. And then, just as a business owner, there are a lot of things that I've seen the DDA do that I've never seen. I never even knew there was any involvement or any DDA to provide any benefits for all the years I was in business until Vivian came on board. You know, I, I put a gigantic improvement on the big stone building next to Baggerdave's that I think that we did a heck of a job renovating that place, and it took forever. The only money I ever received at all was because of the facade grant. All that money was on my back, my shoulders, and my, my employees. And I'll tell you, it wasn't a lot, but it sure, sure made me feel like, you know what? Someone else is, is looking at my interests, someone else is saying, hey, you know what? We're going to kick in a little bit, we're going to chip in, help you with your burden, help improve the city, and that's, that's fantastic. And all the years I've been in business, you know what? A little pat on the back, a little help was, was, was gigantic. So, little things like that, and that, now that I've been on the board, I think, I think we're really trying to do the right thing. I think, I think Vivian's an incredible steward for the city, for the downtown area. But I also, believe me, as, as a DDA member, I, I take note, I take to heart some of the comments that were shared, so I'll, I'll go to bat and try to help prove that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. And like you said, we have very passionate people in this city. We have very passionate business owners, residents, folks that are employees, workers, contractors. When you have a lot of very passionate people, sometimes it's difficult to get on the same side of things. And look, to be honest, I don't know that it's always possible to, but there has to at least be an effort and an attempt. at least be an effort and an attempt. Because at the end of the day, I don't care if you're on the DDA, Chamber, Board, Commission, Business Owner, Resident, sitting up here, we all want the same thing. We all want what's best for the city. I mean, we have to make very difficult decisions on a lot of things, but we do it because we're always thinking, what's in the best interest of the city and Mr. Egby hearing? Opportunities, that you mentioned, to get more involved. One of the things that we talked about at our work session, all-day work session, was being more, I guess, more of a team with the DDA and with the other groups, as opposed to, you know, for some reason, it looks like the city's over here and the DDA's over here sometimes, and it shouldn't be that way, and it's not supposed to be that way. We need to be much more involved with everything moving forward so that we're all working together. Again, doesn't mean we're always going to agree, but right in the middle, my very... Yeah, I guess now I've already stopped.
I agree with you. I agree with you. But we, as business owners, isn't her job to be with us as business owners?
Yeah, Cindy, I'm not going to disagree with you, and I'm not going to ask you to...
You don't even have to answer me.
No. I think there's some things that we're not going to handle and solve today during this meeting right now, but there are things that need to be solved and handled. I will tell you that. Can we agree on that? Yes? Okay. Thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Getting hands raised. Mr. Mayor.
Continue to raise hands in the spirit of sharing some of that. The city had gone for more than a decade without any leadership in this position. We've had tremendous volunteer base through the DDA board all these years, great folks that show up, much like yourselves, Mr. Egby, and others have a day job and a night job and families and things, that they take time out of their lives to come and attend a session, have great conversations, make a few key decisions, and then go about their business, and they come back a month later. And, you know, the administration has done the best they could, but there has been no full-time focus on our downtown. So we, this is our first time reviewing this type of thing, because we've basically gone from zero to developing a very sound core infrastructure in working with the downtown. Is it perfect? No. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely. Have we seen great results? I think so. And so I'm looking forward to having another extension to, a first extension to the contract here, so that we can continue that momentum and take this feedback to heart, encourage the board to propose an evaluation process that suits the board so that they can have even more confidence in the decisions that they make going forward. So just wanted to offer that little bit of history that we've had. This is the most effort and focus we've had on our downtown and as long as many of us have been here.
Councilmember Henin?
Yeah. Many of the things I'm hearing tonight, it's not the first time. Some of them I heard even, you know, while I was running for office. You know, and something that wasn't addressed that's also a concern to me is sometimes there's exaggerated statements that are made, that those sorts of things concern me. But I will not dispute that Vivian has done a lot of good work for the city, and there has been a lot of commendable things. And I think the cooperation is where things have fallen down. What I wanted to propose was a one-year extension to the contract, not two. And not to codify this in the contract, but at about 10 months, that a survey be sent out to the DDA as a whole, the DDA district business owners as a whole, to get feedback on how things are performing and how that cooperation is improving.
Comments on Councilmember Henin's suggestion? One, Mr. Attorney, is that a thing that could be done? Do we have control over the contract to do that?
Well, yes and no. What you have is the ability to approve or disapprove the contract. Now, you can, just taking Mr. Henin's proposal, you know, council could certainly do a couple of things. I guess one would be to postpone, to allow that message to be taken back to the DDA to consider whether they would, they, as well as the director, would agree to a modification of the contract to the one-year term, bring it back. So that's one approach. Another approach would be to simply decide that you won't approve it is two years. That would also send a message back to the DDA that they would need to come back to you with a different form of agreement for you to approve. But we can't just amend the contract here tonight.
Right. So, but don't we have the authority to, at any time, say, "We want to take a look at this," or "We want to review," or "We want to send?"
Well, you have, yeah. As I mentioned before, the agreement is not etched in concrete in the sense that it can't be reopened for two years. There is the ability to terminate without cause or, you know. And when I say terminate, it would also be the opportunity to just, you know, bring up, discuss, evaluate, any of those things.
We, as city council, have the power to terminate. It doesn't require the DDA board to do the termination.
No. The termination would be with, through the DDA board, because the contract is with the DDA board. The director works for the DDA board. So that's who hires and fires her, subject to the consent or the approval of this council as far as the appointment and contract terms go, as well as the budget. Keep in mind, we have that authority too on an annual basis as we approve the budget and all things that go into the budget for the DDA.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the DDA has done a lot of good things over the years. I've seen great changes since Vivian came on board. And Lord knows, we don't see eye to eye all the time either. So I don't think this needs, this needs some tweaks. The way the DDA is doing things needs some tweaks. We don't need to go in there with an axe and start chopping on it. I think some minor tweaking and making sure that all the businesses are getting what they think they need to be getting would help, but I don't see any major things that have to be done to this.
Okay. Any additional comments before call for the vote? Again, we can, as council, decide we want to look into what's going on in the DDA. We can send things out. We can get feedback and make sure that that gets to the DDA.
You have considerable oversight over the DDA's activities.
Excellent. Ms. Blanchard? Sorry. Would you please call the roll on M-0319, please?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes.
Ms. Blanchard, would you please call the next item on tonight's agenda?
Communications.
Who is up first?
Councilmember Dean.
Councilmember Dean.
That's me. Parks and Rec Department is very busy right now. Tickets are available for the Daddy Daughter Dance on January 19th and the Mother-Son Dance on January 26th. Winter programs are happening now, and some have start dates in the coming weeks, so I encourage you to go online or stop by the Parks and Recreation Office if you're interested in trying a new class. For online registration, or if you want to browse the classes online, you can go to Berkeley dot MaxGalaxy dot net and see everything there. Winter Fest is Saturday, February 2nd, from 12 to 3 at the Community Center. Come out and enjoy all that the Parks and Recreation Department and the community have to offer in the winter months. And I'm saving the best thing for last. The Parks and Recreation Department had applied for a grant for some major improvements at Oxford Park, and I am really happy to share with everyone that the first hoop, the first level of approval has happened. And that's very exciting, and I know Teresa and the entire Parks and Rec staff has worked very hard for that. Now we're waiting, it's going to take four to six months for the National Park Service to approve this as well. But I know that this is a really big step. Last year, or the last time they applied, I think we were off by five points, something really ridiculously small. So it feels great to have this first level of approval, and I look forward to, fingers crossed, the National Parks approving this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, I have nothing to report from the Tree Board or the Environmental Committee. They haven't met yet this month. My next talk with Dennis is tomorrow, Tuesday, January 8th. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the library. You don't have to be there for the whole time. Just drop by any time. And I think my wife is at home cooking right now, so maybe there'll be some treats. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. My report will be equally short. No meetings since the last ones, since our last council meeting. Coolidge Avenue Task Force will meet this Thursday, the 10th, at 8:00 a.m. in Public Safety on the second floor. Zoning Board of Appeals is January 14th at 7:00 p.m. right here. And then Planning Commission is January 22nd at 7:30 in the evening, also right here. So that's all I have.
Ally is not cooking. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. Likewise, looking ahead to the year here, the DDA update, again, thanks to all those who participated in the Merry Month events, both the businesses and the residents, and patrons who enjoyed all that downtown has to offer. And check out the downtownberkeley.com for more information about what's upcoming. And certainly, as the liaison to the committee, I'll be communicating tonight's discussion to that body when they meet on Wednesday. We have folks in attendance, so I have high confidence that there will be a continued dialogue about the direction and the support going forward, for sure. Historical Committee, new coffee mugs are available for those who are interested in collect these. This one is a throwback to the old banner from 1971, the Berkeley Week here. And someone might be watching. I don't know.
I'm sure a lot of people are.
They'll turn it off after this, I'm sure. So these are, so whether this is your first mug in your collection of Historical Committee mugs, or if this is the latest addition to your growing collection, these are available in the museum, they're available in the library, in City Hall, places that you can put these to good use, like I have tonight. The committee also echoes the sentiments of Mr. Height and our support for and thoughts for Mr. Milner. David is a member of the Historical Committee and brings much information and energy to that board. On behalf of the committee, I certainly extend my support to him and his family as they go through all the things that they're going through. The committee meets next Sunday, January 13th, at 4 o'clock across the street in the second floor. And in that meeting, they'll be talking about the museum asset management platform. So, you know, real museums keep track of the assets that they have, what's in stock, what we have, where it's at, how we received it, those types of things. And Berkeley continues to make progress in having a greater fact base and assets, data around the assets that we have in our museum. Museum is open most Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00, and Wednesdays from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Third Committee, the Technology Advisory Committee, likewise hasn't met since we last assembled here. Their next meeting is next week's Wednesday, January 16th. They'll be focusing on the short-term, short and long-term goals, both for the committee and to help think through some of the technology strategies. Now's a good time, as the city rallies around budget forecasts for the next fiscal year, which starts on July 1st, for ways that the Technology Advisory Committee can help support the various departments in achieving their goals and objectives by leveraging technology. In prior meetings, they had been working with each of the department heads, one meeting at a time, to better understand their department's needs and sharing with them some of the ways that technology can be brought to bear, to help streamline their operations and provide better experiences for our residents. And finally, it was Brad Paisley who once said, "Tomorrow is the first blank page of a 365-page book. Write a good one." And what I think he means by that is this is our year to write and our year to structure and to think about what's ahead. We have every opportunity to continue the great progress that this community has made and build upon the learnings of past adventures here as we move forward and write our book together. So join me in turning that page tomorrow and seeing what we can do to help share and archive our story. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Okay, first of all, the library. As usual, I'm not going to read all of their programs. Matt does so many. But just to give you an example, this is January's programs. This is page 1, 2, 3, 4. So that's why I'm not going to read them all to you. But check the website and see what's available. There's programs for adults, for teens, for preschoolers, for moms and babies, for just about anything that you can think of. He does a wonderful job. The Beautification Committee, they're going to be looking for new projects for this, coming up this year through the spring and summer. If anyone has any ideas, please send me an email at estedman@berklee-mish.net, and I would be happy to pass it on to that committee. Dan and Anella did a wonderful job driving around Berkeley, you know, covering the entire city and getting pictures of the houses and their lights. And I thought their presentation last month was exceptional. The Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, we are mainly working on finding various ways, different ways, unique ways, to communicate. And the one idea that we've come up with is block ambassadors. I don't have any further information, just that it's going to be coming. We'll be looking towards getting a network of people all over the community that knows a lot of their neighbors and can be an ambassador to disseminate information that the city needs to get out to all of the people. And that's all I have tonight, except congratulations to Parks and Rec. I think that's very exciting.
It's really exciting.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. One thing that the city council prides itself on is maintaining a good relationship with the school district. And so I want to announce that the school district, the Berkeley Education Foundation is having their Off to the Races fundraising campaign. It's going to be February 2nd, which is a Saturday night, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Club Venetian in Madison Heights. And tickets are available online from the Berkeley Education Foundation. They use this money to fund grants for the teachers. If a teacher has a project that they want and they need a little extra money to do something with the kids, they can write a mini-grant and get that, and that's where the money goes to. It's an exceptional program. So to remind everybody, if you're interested and you want to have a good night of fun, it's February 2nd at the Venetian Club. It's Berkeley Education Foundation's Off to the Races.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 2019 is expected to be a great year. We've got a lot going on, a lot planned for the next 12 months or for the next 365 days, not only within the city but also regionally. The Woodward Avenue Action Committee is poised to make a comeback in a big way. They've made some organizational changes that, as a participating organization, I'm really excited to see roll out. Likewise, Oakland County Water Resource Commissioner's Office, just rolls off the tongue, specifically with the communities and the Drainage District that we're in, have made a concerted effort, and we're already starting to see the fruits of those labors to tackle the stormwater issues that not only we've seen here, but affect everybody in the 12-town system or the GWK system, whatever you dub it. So not just good things happening internally, but also externally that are going to affect the city as well. As mentioned earlier, we're launching into the budget season. As of tomorrow, we will do so with the new finance director. Mr. Mark Pollak has accepted that position, and will start bright and early tomorrow morning. So look forward to a very long tenure with Mr. Pollak. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Short update. Since we last met in December, our state legislature, the so-called lame duck legislature, was very busy. And some things they did were of interest to the city of Berkeley. You may recall that I had explained and expressed some concern to the council before about some of the proposed legislation that the state legislature was considering. One, had it passed, would have largely, if not completely, taken away our authority to regulate tree removals in the city of Berkeley. That died, fortunately. Something else that was being considered would have affected, would have actually preempted our ability here at the city level to regulate short-term rentals, beds and breakfast, tourist homes, and the like. That died. So we're still in play. One thing that did pass that I think you'll be pleased with is that the fireworks law was amended. Now, we have sat here, I think, for the last five, six, maybe it's even been seven years now, trying to... now, trying to, I guess, explain to residents as best we could, especially in the summer when fireworks are, tend to be more popular, how it is that what used to be a prohibition of fireworks in the city of Berkeley, the state has taken that local control away from us in large part. Well, the law's been amended, so they've restored part of it. There used to be 30 days a year, the national holidays and the days before and after, 30 days where we had our hands tied, where we were preempted from regulating the discharge of fireworks that could go off as late as 1:00 in the morning. Well, they've restored some of that authority, whereas if we exercise that authority, we can now restrict the discharge of fireworks except for 12 days. So we're going down from 30 to 12 days and we can also limit the time that they can be discharged to 11:45 p.m. Still late, but it's better than 1:00 a.m. So under the new law, if we choose to exercise this authority, people will still be able to shoot off fireworks on New Year's Eve. That day, they can do them till 1:00 in the morning. Also, on the Saturday and Sunday before Memorial Day, the Saturday and Sunday before Labor Day, and this is probably the main period when we get complaints, but June 29th through July 4th. So people will still be able to discharge then, but we can move the time up to 11:30. So in order to take advantage of that newfound, restored authority, we would need to amend our ordinance. I'm making the assumption council probably wants to do that, so, and I don't see any head shake, so I will work with the city manager to get a proposed ordinance on one of your upcoming council agendas before we get into the fireworks season.
Thank you. Much of what I was going to discuss has already been mentioned by my colleagues. I do want to reiterate something that we've talked about a couple of meetings ago. We will be holding a town hall on February 19th to discuss recreational marijuana. It will be a town hall and I can assure you that there will be, on the evaluation sheet, on the assessment, it will say yes or no. Not going to be any ambiguity involved. There'll be two, you can write whatever you want, but there will be boxes and we will know whether it is a yes or a no. Aside from that, I do want to wish everybody a very Happy New Year and a prosperous 2019. And I think sometimes we forget, maybe forget or take for granted what a great place Berkeley actually is to live, to work, to play, to own a business, all of those things. And it just seems that every time we have something that is polarizing, we slip down the same, very slippery slope of it's us versus them and things, especially in certain media, just get ugly, much uglier than it needs to be. And even though we've talked about it before, especially after the last vote, you know, we've seen it come back again every time there's a contentious issue. And I'm not entirely sure why that is. We've got 17 different Facebook groups that pop up every time someone feels upset. They make a new one until somebody in there, they get upset and then they make another new one. Again, it's okay to disagree. We don't have to agree on everything. But I really want us to focus in 2019 on at least respecting each other, whether it's in person, here, whether it's on the road, whether it's in the street, whether it's on social media. Look, I don't, we're never going to all agree. We had a couple of very difficult decisions, or at least one difficult decision, that we had to make today. We've gotten a ton of resident input. It's not an easy thing to do. It is okay to respectfully disagree with somebody, but please do it respectfully. I don't want, I just don't want us to turn into something that we're not. We see this right here, you know, we care, that's a thing. It's always been that way. It still should be that way, but this era has just fed easier ways for folks to maybe not be as caring towards each other. So in 2019, I sound like a broken record, I'm going to say it again, disagree all you want, have very spirited debates about what you think is in the best interest of the city, but please do it respectfully without having to get into personal attacks or, you know, whatever cyber potential bullying, whatever else there could be. That's all I'm going to say. But have a great 2019. Happy New Year, everybody. With that, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Closed session, matter of considering whether to meet in closed session after conclusion of the regular meeting to discuss the city manager's evaluation.
As everybody saw, with communications being moved up, there will be no action at all taken after this closed session. In fact, it will actually just be council and the manager in the room. We will adjourn, but there is no action taken. Just want everyone to know because we don't, you don't have to sit in here and wait for anything fun. With that, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by the mayor, Pro Tem, with support from councilmember Dean. Ms. Boucher, would you please take the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turba?
Yes.
That means I don't get to publicly bang this today. Close session. You can bring it with you.
I will. You will.